Thank you all for coming. The first thing on the agenda tonight for the work session of February the 4th is a draft resolution for the Mayor and City Council of Laurel approving a settlement agreement with Comcast in Maryland. I'm told that Marty and Kevin are going to speak to this.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, council members. Got two agenda items tonight relating to our Comcast franchise. A little bit of background, just quick, to set the stage. We signed a franchise agreement with Comcast in 2000, was a 15-year agreement. That agreement will end on March 13th next month, so we'll talk about it in the second agenda item. Related to the franchise expiration, we have been in a renewal negotiation with franchise, probably for the last year. We started, it is consortium of the county and probably the big four, big five cities, us, Green Belt Buoy. Started meeting in January amongst ourselves with a municipal attorney that represented all the municipalities, and then a telecom firm out of DC. About September timeframe, we actually sat down with Comcast, we started working through a renewal. As part of that, as that process progressed after January, Comcast got filed a, with the FCC, a form to take over Tom Warner. As part of that process, they sent us a form, I think it's 290, 394, I believe, in April. Basically, our code requires that if they are going to do anything that's going to significantly change their company, they have to come back to us to allow us to review it. So they did that with all the county and the municipalities. We have 120 days to review that, that form, and basically agree or not agree. In our renewal process negotiation, the group asked Comcast to extend that deadline all the way out to this, the 13th of this month, so next week. So getting the franchisees approval in a recommendation, while it's not, it's not going to stop them in their acquisition of Tom Warner, they do not want a franchisee to stand up and say, "We're going to deny your request." So this was used essentially to, with some leverage with Comcast in the renewal. So as we started the negotiation, it has not been going, I want to use the word "not well," but we're not making a lot of progress. With the county attorney, telecom attorney, and the municipal attorneys, we started making some noise that we might deny their transfer at our, take counsel action amongst all the municipalities and the county. As a result of that, knowing that the renewal process is nowhere near getting completed and finished, there was what we're calling a settlement agreement put on the table. What the settlement agreement is going to do is, it is going to take away some of the, some of the noncompliance items that the municipalities and the county has brought up, and essentially set them aside for the transfer to Tom Warner. In other words, with this document, we will not deny their renewal. So that's what this document does. It does not do anything to assist us or further us along in our renewal negotiation for a franchise, but it puts some items on the table that are important to both, and particularly to take off noncompliance items that Comcast does not want to deal with for the renewal. It does not take them off for the, excuse me, for the transfer. It does not take them off the table for the renewal. So I'll go through this somewhat quickly, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but on, from the time, so every municipality will, and the county will sign this. First document you have is a resolution. I think the resolution's pretty straightforward. All these documents, really the exception to the settlement document are drafts. We think the resolutions for both this and the extension are pretty much final, but we may see some tweaks and some format in the next couple of days. Related to the settlement agreement, the first page kind of talks about the fact that by doing this, the noncompliance items go away for the transfer. For that, what we're going to get in section two, it comes down to this, we're going to get, for PEG, we're going to get an HD channel. We're going to be able to broadcast in HD, and they will give us and pay for all the equipment that we have to do to broadcast in HD. So our cable channel will be able to broadcast in HD, once we give them 120 days notice that we're ready to do that. The 2-2 basically talks about the fact that in the renewal process, they're kind of going to guarantee us four channels, four HD channels. We're going to continue the existing PEG channels, and PEG, the PEG fee, what we're going to get, which for some municipalities is a big deal. So the PEG fee has been, it's a capital grant, which means that we can buy equipment, cameras, we can buy switches in the studio, we can buy hardware, but we cannot pay for people to operate the cameras. We cannot pay for operating cost. So in this, in 2-4, what Comcast is saying is, if we want to spend 50,000, so let's say we have $100,000 in PEG money a year, if we want to spend $50,000 of that for operating cost, we have to come up with $25,000. So it's a two-for-one. If we give them a dollar, we can spend $2 of PEG. That's new, but a municipality like Buoy is heavy in paying people, and the county also. We'll have to see where we're going to fit in with that, but that is something that they have not been willing to give up in the past. 2-5, line extensions, that's really all the county. They have noncompliance issues with saturation as far as build-outs, we do not have that in the city. The southern part of the county, there are places in the southern part of the county where there is no cable at all, whether it's either Comcast or Verizon. And then 2-6, there's going to be a payment of $50,000. That payment is going to go to Buoy, and I think Brentwood maybe. They were, because of the way Comcast interpreted their code, they were not, Comcast would not give them the renewal fee or the transfer fee. So in our county code, when they sent us that 394 in April, along with that, we required a $5,000 fee, which we received. Buoy did not, I think Cota City did not. So this is the way to get that money to them, and the rest of the money is going to go to some studies that were done by the negotiation team to offset those costs that ultimately we would end up paying. That is essentially the settlement agreement. And then, in the last pages, is some legal terms, is basically saying that this will last till the renewal process is done, and essentially it will not affect anything in the renewal process.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions from the council? Ms. Nicholas?
Just a question. You mentioned that we cannot pay for operating costs. You mentioned earlier that we cannot pay for operating costs.
With PEG fees, with money they give us under the heading of PEG.
Okay, just another question. As people in the community come in to do shows, are they having to operate air equipment, like the camera equipment?
With some of the people, we do have come in, and Audrey's here, Audrey, you can jump in here too, but yeah, there are, we do have people that come in and they may operate cameras, they may do reporting-type stuff.
So does this impact that at all?
Well, it gives the Communications Department and administration the ability to now use this money that Comcast would give us, that was only allowed to pay for equipment, to put that money into operating cost, to operate the studio.
That's my only question.
Mr. Les?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just, so just so nobody's confused, this is, this is to the benefit of the city, this change in the provision, because right now, we cannot spend PEG money on salaries, correct?
We cannot.
Okay, so in this case, they give us one, we match it, we spend it. The 1.5, 1.6, franchiser believes Comcast is noncompliant, number provisions Comcast disputes franchiser's allegations. What happens to the issue about, we've got wires hanging all over this city that Comcast won't remove. They're hanging from poles, sometimes they hang in the roadways, we've got damaged boxes that have their things, they don't seem to fix those things. Isn't that a noncompliance issue?
It is, it is a noncompliance issue if they won't fix them. I believe that we have had, we have called, and to my knowledge, I don't know if Audrey has been involved in any, I think Corrine's been doing most of that, but when we have called them and said, "This needs to be fixed," they have done that.
Yeah, but hold on a minute. This is, they've got an infrastructure that they installed, and they're losing part of that infrastructure to Verizon, and Dish, and other methods of getting the signal, and they should be going around and looking at their infrastructure, and they don't do that, Kevin.
No.
And that's a noncompliance issue, because when you got, when you got one of those COAX lines hanging in the middle of the road...
It is a noncompliance issue, and it is on the list. I mean, that is part of the three or four items, five items, that are on the noncompliance list. But as far as such things as, and it's on the last page here, where we're supposed to get six megahertz of bandwidth, and our consultant says they're only giving us three megahertz, which is huge.
I understand those issues. They're listed here, but what I don't see is, we're going to, we're going to, let's see, noncompliance go away for the transfer. When do they pop up again?
On the renewal.
And when's that?
That's in negotiation, that's continuing.
I understand that, Mayor, but I want to make sure that they understand that people don't like that.
Right.
They don't like the fact that their community has got these wires hanging down, and we shouldn't have to call and complain. They should have somebody, just like the telephone company used to do, just like the power companies, yeah, they react to losses of signal or losses of power, but more importantly, they come and survey those poles, that's why they got tags on them.
Yeah, this is a huge, this is an issue with every municipality, it's a huge issue for Green Belt, with all the old apartments they have, and the infrastructure there.
I've heard that, right.
Yes, yeah, it's a big issue, and other than the transfer, that stuff's still on the table, so.
Okay, well, I'd like to be advised, you know, kept apprised of what's going with, going on with that, because again, I mean, I know, I've called, Marty told him about lines in the past, especially when they're hanging in the roadway, when they're hanging on the side of a pole, and all they do is they put a piece of tape around it, and then the tape goes away, and the thing falls on the ground.
Nope, they, there's been some heated discussions about those exact issues.
And the boxes that get damaged. I mean, there's got to be a better way than those boxes, somebody hits it, somebody backs into it, and all of a sudden, it's, you know, it's wide open. I mean, the telephone company does a better job than they do.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that concludes my questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. That was one of the questions I had too, so I guess...
But that is a noncompliance issue at every municipality.
Yeah, I'll just revisit a couple of the addresses that I knew of that we were visiting last year. I knew up in the Bellamy section that we had received some complaints in a couple of the areas. And so the HD, I think you just explained that, so we'd receive more power?
Well...
What, how do you achieve HD, I guess?
You know, that's bandwidth, and that's the, that's the biggest fight, because they do not want to give us a lot of bandwidth, and so when you use HD, you use up more bandwidth. They want us to show that, so in other words, they're not, they don't want to give us an HD channel if we're going to have a bulletin board up. They don't want to do it, because, because they want to put their content up, and it's revenue for them, and they know what's coming down the next five years. We're going to go to streaming, like Netflix, and it's going to be more bandwidth-intensive. So they know all that stuff's all coming. So they're pushing us to, what they're saying is tell the story, and Audrey's done a good job, I think we're in the lead right now with, you know, turn on your, you know, your power with Laurel TV. That story is, I would say, the lead story right now with our consortium, with the negotiating team. But now that we may turn the channel on, they're going to want to see, and they want to see the content, and new content, and that's with all our new interns and everything, with the shows that the Communications Department's producing, I think we're probably going to be in the lead in showing how this is done.
Good, very good, thank you.
I'm going to take it through another perspective, that's going to be service. I've changed from Comcast, I've gone to Verizon, because Comcast could not give me service. What has been discussed about service?
I don't think, I mean, service is where we're hanging up right now, there's a big discussion on service, and it's more, you know, getting a store in the area that you can go to, bring your box, all that stuff. They want to pull back from all that, they want to do mail order, they only want to have one store, and then the times to respond to calls. There's, I think, the big discussion of Comcast is at the lower end of the survey market for service, right over the Tom Warner, which they're about to acquire. So there's a lot of discussion on service. We just haven't really got to the point where we're talking about making decisions on it, but in the last couple of weeks, that was a lot of discussion on service, and where you will get service locally.
But it's not so much just to service locally, I mean, I appreciate that, but it's also the lack thereof, and total disregard for who you are, and what you need, and what particular time, and getting somebody that, please understand my comments, that you can communicate with...
Right.
...in a way that you can communicate your problem, and have that person understand, it's almost like they throw a roadblock out there in front of you to keep you from solving your problem, and you don't get any credit for the days lost.
And there's, from, you know, I mean, in the negotiating team, there's not a lot of leverage from a perspective of calling, when you call the 800 number, at the municipal or the county level. You don't have a lot of, a lot of leverage there to, even though you may, you know, you have a needs assessment, and you're showing that, it's just, I don't know.
I, for one, because I went to Verizon, I've gotten great service, and I think they appreciate their customers a lot better than Comcast does. And so when I first saw this post from you, you know, I was hoping for an opportunity to change cable companies.
Well, I think what I can tell you is that there will be two franchises in the city, for the, you know, there'll be a Comcast franchise, and there'll be a Verizon franchise.
Okay. By the way, for the record, Mr. Smalls is stuck in Annapolis tonight, and so I can't call on him, and so without that, any other questions from the council? Well, Mayor, you have a comment?
Just a commercial break. For those that may see wires, those that are out there listening, those that see wires, boxes that are bad, don't need to call anybody. Use your iPhone, use your iPad, download the My Laurel app, there is a numerous things on the service request, you can take a photograph of it, it's documented, which is what we need when we go and do these renewals, and you'll get a response back. So general public, if you see something out there, I've used it numerous times, we get responses back within 24 hours, and then they give you an update on whether the boxes or the wires and that have been taken care of, but it's a good way to document those things that we may be having issues with, especially for when Kevin and others in the council are looking at negotiating renewals and things like that, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
John, any comments?
No, I mean, Mr. Frost has pretty much laid out what the negotiations have been and what this does. It's somewhat of a stopgap agreement, while the negotiations for the ultimate renewal of the franchise are going to have to continue. You get some things in the meantime, while that process continues.
John, your mic's not on.
Yeah, it's on.
It is, okay.
Yeah. That's essentially what you're doing here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Barnes, any comments from you?
No, I think that this agreement sets us up in a place where we can take Laurel TV to the next level. I agree with Kevin that we are leading the pack, and setting us up with the equipment and the infrastructure that we need to be ready to go when Comcast makes that cable line available to us, and I want us to be at the head of the pack, and ready to do that, with some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes to get us ready. And I think this is, this is a critical step, I think, we need to take to get there.
Thank you. Anybody else from staff that would like to comment? Mr. Les?
Let me, Kevin, let me just clarify something. As I understand it, if subscriber loses signal, they make the appointment, they get on the telephone, whatever they tell them to do online doesn't do anything, then the person shows up five days later, is there any way for the subscriber to get chargeback credits?
Yes, yeah, there's, they have a policy, there's some hours that if they're late or, or they don't do it, you can get, they will give you a week chargeback or whatever, free service, yes.
I don't think the subscribers know that.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll ask what exactly the, our Verizon and our Comcast policy are, but both vendors, both the cable providers will do that.
Yeah, again, where I hear, where I've heard concerns is with, not so much Verizon, it's with Comcast. And I guess they lose signals for a lot of reasons, something happened with the wind blowing a wire or whatever. Again, I think it would be, it would be good for our citizens if they knew what the policy was, and how to get a credit if they're down for five days. Now, that's not to say that their television might be the problem, I know that, okay, but if the box is malfunctioning, or the, or the what's, the line into the house is a problem, again, I think it would be beneficial for our citizens to understand that.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right, so I gather we're ready to go ahead and move forward on this, and Kevin, thank you very much, and if council has any other follow-up questions, get it to the administration so that we can be ready to move on this the next meeting. Okay, we'll go on to item number two, a discussion on the extension of the city's franchise with the Comcast, Maryland Incorporated. Again, Kev, you going to...
Yep, so what you have before you is an ordinance, which may see some more formatting, but essentially, this document basically says that we are going to extend our current franchise agreement in total, until the renewal process is complete. Everything in that document will stay, and just for your general info, we are the last municipality in the county to extend. The county probably extended a year ago, and between now and the past year, every other municipality has gone through this process and extended it. So what will happen is, Monday night, this will be approved, council president and the clerk will sign this, I will send this to Comcast, and they will reply with, I think you have Exhibit A, essentially a letter that will come back and say that we are, it's approved, and we're locked in again.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Frost.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving to number three, ordinance number 1829, an ordinance to approve and adopt an urban redevelopment plan for the Eastern Main Street, Avondale Mill neighborhood of the City of Laurel, and providing an effective date. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. In August of last year, the Community Redevelopment Authority requested that community planning prepare a neighborhood plan for them. They identified Eastern Main Street, Avondale Mill Historic Districts, which is bounded on the north by Patuxent River, west by C Street, east by US 1 North or Second Street, and on the south by Fiddy Alley. And then Area 2 is Fiddy Alley on the north, Washington Boulevard on the west, Second Street on the east, and Laurel Avenue on the west. Area 1 contains 28.5 acres, and Area 2 contains nine acres. The plan draws on the City of Laurel Master Plan, the City of Laurel Urban Redevelopment Plan, which was approved by city council at the creation of the CRA, and the City Unified Land Development Code. It contains goals, objectives, and policies from those documents, it contains procedures for submitting plans, zoning applications, and so forth. This went to the Planning Commission on January the 13th, 2015. It was heard, reviewed, and recommended by them that this go to the mayor and city council for approval. Ordinance number 1829 is the ordinance which would, should you choose, to adopt the neighborhood plan. That completes the presentation, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council questions, Ms. Query? Mr. Les?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Jack for putting this together for us. This is what I believe will be the first two of many types of overlays, and I'm going to call it an overlay, and it's overlay that will happen as a result of activities of the Community Redevelopment Authority. And again, this is, this is the first, as I say, the first of many, and hopefully, resulting good things for the city as far as redevelopment and economic development. I want to thank again publicly, Jack and staff for putting this together. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much. If anybody has any further questions, they'll submit it to staff for response before we take care of this on the next Monday, our meet, go to item number four, ordinance number 1831, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the FY15, FY2020 capital improvements program. Ms. Saylor?
Good evening. This ordinance takes the savings balance from the Montgomery Street Improvement Project and disperses it to Dorset Road Improvements, Streetlight Safety Enhancements, and the Advancement of the Cherrywood Drive Improvements to FY15. It had been originally in FY18, but in ordinance 1811, it brought it back to FY16, but this funding will provide some engineering and early construction. Then there's traffic signalization for a, to fund a pedestrian improvement on Main Street, as well as Cypress Street. Those funds will come from the Speed Camera Fund. On page three, $63,000 will come from the PEG funds that Mr. Frost referenced. This will fund three new camera systems for the cable studio, and the last item will be insurance proceeds being allocated to the fleet equipment acquisition. These will be to replace vehicles from accumulated insurance proceeds that Mr. Furie will talk about in another agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Questions from the council? Mr. Les?
Thank you, just one question, Michelle. The fleet equipment acquisition, is the whole 50,861 insurance proceeds, or is that also made up partially of general obligating funds, general operating funds?
No, sir, it's all insurance, it's accumulated insurance.
Okay, so it's not just the two cars that we totaled?
Right, no, these are not the insurance proceeds just from those vehicles, these are accumulated over time, that we couldn't do anything else with them until it built up.
Because Rob will be talking about the two cars here shortly.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that people aren't confused that we didn't, we didn't get $50,000 for two cars.
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Query?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
All right, my question to the chief, if it's okay, I'd like to just follow up on, and maybe more for the record than anything else, we were always told before that the K-9 units didn't want to use one of the SUVs because of the dogs jumping in and out. Has that been something that's been misleading?
There's been a change in practice. The current Explorer vehicle is much lower to the ground, it's basically the same frame as the cars, the Ford cars. It is, so it's lower to the ground, it's providing more room, and it's set up for the K-9 vehicles. The problem that we're running into is the cars are overheating, they're breaking down, we're having equipment failure because of the overuse and the continual usage of the car, and it truthfully is not built for that type of scenario. And it truthfully is not built for that type of scenario. These have backup air conditioners. It's more roomy for the dog, and it allows for a better environment for the dog, and it's built for that type of usage. And it's an all-wheel drive vehicle, which will allow them to use it during inclement weather.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll be ready to move on this item. Go to item number five, a consideration and recommendation for purchase of the two vehicles. Mr. Free?
Yes, good evening. Yeah, the Department of Public Works has put together a recommendation to buy these two police vehicles. Prior to assembling this package, we called several agencies. And Apple Ford presently has the State of Maryland contract for the Ford Explorer, and Chriswell Chevrolet has the State of Maryland contract for the Impalas. As Michelle touched on, the proceeds are coming from an accumulated insurance funds to purchasing. So it's recommended that the mayor and city council award the purchase of these vehicles for $50,861.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll be ready to move on this to the next meeting. Moving to, on to number six on our agenda, an ordinance number 1830, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 11 Planning and Development Article III moderately priced dwelling units and Article IV workforce dwelling units of the Code of City of Laurel and enacting Article III Affordable Housing Program in the Code of City of Laurel and providing for an effective date. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance number 1830 provides for combining Article III and Article IV that are currently in the city code. In March of 2008, mayor and city council adopted 1584, which created moderately priced dwelling unit housing program. In November, they adopted ordinance number 1600, which adopted a workforce dwelling unit program. The ordinance before you repeals those two sections and combines them into one. There were, the ordinances are similar, but they're also dissimilar. So this will help staff in order to fulfill the program that the mayor and city council approved. It also will allow staff to prepare administrative rules, which will contain the formulas for the income determinations and the rental determinations, without having to come back to council every time we change a formula. We pretty much follow the same formulas that our contiguous counties follow, which is Howard and Prince George's County. And it's the same requirement as the previous, which is if you build over 50 dwelling units, you would be required to have 3% workforce and 3% moderately priced dwelling units. That remains the same. It also allows, if you build less than 50 dwelling units, which you're not required to, but if the property owner wanted to do that, then they could get a discount on site review plans, fees, and billing permit fees. So it's an incentive for those building less than 50.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Questions from the council, starting with Ms. Query?
So we've got 60% for moderate income? Of household income for Prince George's County? Is how they would qualify?
Yes. The moderately priced income for a family of four in Prince George's County is $107,000. So that the workforce would be 50% of that, or $53,000.
And they would, I don't know if this has been worked out or not. They would get on a waitlist?
They would submit to the community planning department. We'll maintain the list. They will also submit an income certification that shows that they do have an income that qualifies. We also will also have a list from the apartment units currently existing and from developers that are planning new construction. They will sign an agreement that will provide that they will do 3% and 3%. And that will be passed on should they sell the property to the new property owner. He continues for a 20-year period.
And there was a density provision, too?
There's a density option if, because of economic reasons, they need additional units in order to have the additional income because they're providing the 6%, then it allows an additional density to match what they're required to do, which is the 3 and the 3.
Okay. All right. And then for the workforce, we'd allow that to drop down to 50%?
That's correct.
Of the median income of Prince George's County? Okay, I think that's the questions I have at this time. And I know where to find you if I have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Nicholas?
I'm just trying to understand, for the 3%, are there, is this going to be opportunities for Section 8 low income? Or this, it doesn't include that 3%?
It does not exclude people that would have Section 8 vouchers.
It doesn't?
No, it doesn't.
It's in addition to it, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Les?
Yeah, I've watched what has gone on over in Montgomery County for some 40 years, with their different efforts. So let me, let me understand this. If somebody gets on the list because they met the criteria? Huh?
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. So somebody gets on the list because they met the criteria of 50%?
Yes.
Now their name bubbles to the top?
Yes.
Now they exceed the 50%. They get kicked off the list. They had that problem in Montgomery County some years ago. People would wait on a list for a year, two years, three years. It bubbled to the top, and now their income level exceeded the permitted percentage. I mean, there was other problems in Montgomery County, but that was one of the issues.
Yes.
Is that correct? They bubbled, so they bubbled to the top and off because they, okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
You're correct.
Okay. That concludes my question, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is an issue that we'll have on our agenda from February the 9th. And if you have any questions, please submit it to Mr. Brock so we can have it ready to go. She wants it. Tracy, all right, I'm sorry. So we'll have our questions go to Christine, and Christine will then submit them to Mr. Brock. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. All right, item number seven, a draft text amendment to amend Chapter 20 Land Development and Subdivision Article I, zoning, Division 5 zoning districts at Article 5, 6, excuse me, roads and sidewalks, Division 3 Design and Construction Standards and Requirements of the City of Laurel Code, providing effective date. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. What is before you is a draft text amendment. This was the last legislation that Carl Brendel, Bob Manzi, and myself worked on. As we were doing the amendment for the church in the industrial areas, we came across several uses that really should not be in the industrial uses. They are provided for in most instances in other zoning districts. So the effort here is to remove them from the industrial use. And in those instances where it's not provided for in other districts, they would be moved to a commercial districts. So none of the use would actually be eliminated, they're just relocated. And that is essentially the purpose of this text amendment, Mr. President.
Any questions from council? Ms. Nicholas?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Les?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, on the second page, this JJ, where it talks about the liquor license. So my question, Jack, is this doesn't relate to temporary liquor licenses, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, it only relates to a permanent liquor license. So somebody could come into a hall, a rental hall, with a temporary license for that one event.
Yes.
I just want to make sure. We'll lock anybody out from a wedding or?
No, if someone came in for a wedding banquet.
Right.
They could serve their wine or beer.
Okay. And then the other one that I want to ask about is animal kennel. The, when we say special exception, do they have to meet certain noise requirements?
Yes.
Under the special exception rules that we have?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So you couldn't back up the kennel to an apartment building?
Or a residential.
I shouldn't say that. You'd have to meet the requirements as far as noise control, because I know we've had some people that don't like dogs barking, or playing even. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, that concludes my questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. We'll be ready to move on this, and if, again, this, sorry?
It's all right. I'm fine with this.
No, go ahead.
It just, it gets rather confusing because it seems like there's a lot of categories that are extremely opposite of each other, from tattoo parlors to animal kennels.
It seems that over the years, this became a catch-all district. So we're trying to put it back the way it should be.
Yeah. And the first part makes perfect sense, with the utilities. Thank you for your work in this area.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Again, if we have any questions, we'll submit them to the administration, and we'll get them answered before our meeting on February the 9th. Just again, for, excuse me, for the record, there was an item on the work session agenda that was dealing with parking on 9th Street, and I have pulled that off to send it to the Public Safety Committee for review before we take any action on that particular item. So that meeting will take place on February the 19th in meeting room 2 here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. Any other thing to come forward to council? Seeing none, we adjourned. With it.
On the subject of the Comcast documents, we're going to double-check the schedule and talk with the solicitor, but there is the potential we may be asking for the rules to be suspended in Monday night's meeting.
I anticipated that, but thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we adjourned.